Good afternoon. Thanks for joining us this afternoon. First item on the work session is the preliminary agenda review. As always, stop me if you have anything, anything you want to question. Six thirty P.M. next week will be a work session, talk about IBEW labor contract.
One interruption. Yes, that's correct, but let's also mention about the Goals and Priorities Retreat on Tuesday.
On Tuesday, right.
Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, the ten o'clock will be the first part of your work session.
Right, ten o'clock.
I didn't see that one there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Then the six-thirty work session, seven o'clock regular session, with the invocation by Councilmember Elshire, pledge of the flag, the announcements. The meeting scheduled for August, there's no meeting on August first. We'll have work sessions on the eighth, fifteenth, and the twenty-second at four P.M. And a regular session on the twenty-ninth at seven P.M. We'll have two appointments next week to the Hagerstown Housing Authority. We'll have appointments to the Historic District Commission and the City Ethics Commission. We'll have citizen comments, city administrative comments, mayor council comments. We'll adopt the minutes from June sixth, thirteenth, and the twentieth, and consent agenda. First item on the consent agenda, Information Technology and Support Services. Annual Intellectime Software Maintenance Agreement, Intellectime Systems Corporation, Santa Ana, California, for fifty-three thousand, six ninety-two, and ninety-eight cents. The annual units software maintenance agreement from Talat Technologies Incorporated, Dallas, Texas, hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, and thirty-four cents. Under Parson Engineering, the purchase of a mower for the golf course, Finch Services Incorporated out of Westminster, for twenty-nine, nine ninety-five. Design of reconstruction of Pangborn Park Lake, Frederick Seibert and Associates Incorporated, Hagerstown, for thirty-six thousand, eight hundred.
Just to mention where I... Every once in a while, we see bids like this. Thank God for Frederick Seibert and Associates, thirty-six thousand. The next lowest bid was a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, which I think would mean that we wouldn't be doing the Pangborn Lake.
Under the police department, we have the annual software maintenance agreement for HPD, Police Mobile, and RMS. Keystone Public Safety Incorporated, Maple Shade, New Jersey, for eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty. Under utilities, for the lake department, we have the purchase of a two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer from Keystone Ford, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, twenty-seven thousand, eight oh one. Under unfinished business, we have the approval of an ordinance to amend the city code by adding chapter thirty-seven, police and fire department binding interest arbitration. And in new business, we have the approval of resolution, addendum to settlement agreement for forty-three to fifty-three West Washington Street. The approval of a residential lease agreement for Onslow's. The approval of a contract to furnish and install parking access and revenue control system for both parking decks, from Hub Parking Technology, Warrendale P.A., for two hundred and eighty thousand, seven forty-four, which we'll be discussing this evening. The approval of a memorandum of understanding, safe routes to school, Haven Road sidewalks.
Can I have a question here?
Ron, Mayor.
When we heard about this proposal, there were some citizens out there on Haven Road who made some suggestions about what the project ought to be designed. Were there contacts made with those people?
Well, this is...
Did they have any input?
We certainly will. Short answer is no, because we really haven't gotten started. But this project came out of requests from citizens for sidewalks in that area. There was an article in the Herald Mail about it.
Yeah.
We used that actually as our submittal to get the grant.
Yeah.
And the state now has finally gotten us the grant agreement so that we can proceed with the design, so we will be talking to them. I think we'll need to have a public meeting or something.
Oh, okay, okay. If you have a public meeting, I should do it.
Yes, yeah, probably out there at the church.
An acceptance of Green Street Stormwater Grant. The approval of alley improvements, concrete center LLC, Hagerstown, Maryland, for three hundred and twenty-two thousand and forty-five dollars. The approval of liability insurance, local government insurance trust, Hanover, Maryland, for four hundred and six thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. The approval of memorandum of understanding with Washington County Sheriff's Department, tactical emergency medical support. The approval of a new office lease for Borough Box at sixty West Washington Street. The approval of donation of emergency air horns to First Hagerstown Host Company Museum with firefighting history. And then the approval of the IBEW labor contract, if that stays on the agenda.
Yes, and I think, Donovan, is one more item that could claim?
Yes. The quitclaim for parcel between one fifteen and one twenty-five North Prospect Street. It'll be number L.
That we talked about last week.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, one quick question, just to back up just a little bit. The addendum for the contract to sale for Hager Five, is there any... Any calls or concern with that? I know it looks like we've extended this multiple times, and I know it looks like it was mutually agreed upon, but is there anything, I guess, that we can be doing to, I guess, help further that along?
Yes, we've been in consistent communication with the buyers. They experienced some delays, or they're in the process of working through appraisals and insurance for when they purchased the property. They were behind on that. In communication with their attorney and our attorney, we're still waiting for some responses through the Maryland Historic Trust. They seem to be behind in their processes, so we felt it was, at this point, in the best interest of both parties to extend it. We extended it with the October date in mind, hoping we settle sooner, but, once again, with the complexities of the sale, we wanted to at least try to get one more extension and try to wrap this up in the coming months.
Good number.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anything else on the consent agenda? All right. Upgrades to equipment and parking decks, Eric.
Good afternoon. Hello. From along with me, Jason Rogers, our working systems supervisor. He runs the system for me for the city. And I wanted to bring this to the council a little bit to talk about, because there's a number of things in this project I thought you might be made aware of and if you have any questions. First and foremost, this job is, or this project, isn't just upgrading the equipment. We're pretty much replacing all the equipment. All the gates, the pay equipment, everything that you see, it's in a yellow box out there, is going to be gone. And we're going to replace with new equipment. Primarily, the equipment has gotten older. The A&amp;E deck equipment is ten years old, but the equipment is made by a company called Federal, which no longer exists. So it's becoming increasingly more difficult to find parts and to get replacements and have repairs made. The company was bought by Three M, who everybody's heard of. Three M pretty much stripped the company of what they wanted and then closed it down. So we really have no choice but to move forward and try and replace equipment, so it seemed like a good time to do that. The next point I'm going to make was that the... We're not going with the low bidder. We're actually going with the, I guess it was the second most. And there's a reason for that. We hired a consultant to help us put this together because the equipment is complicated in how it's used, and the back, I'll say, the back door side of all the things on the back side you don't see, which has to do with credit cards and that sort of thing. And so the consultant helped us walk through this, but this project isn't just about replacing equipment. This is about having a long-term relationship, because you have to have repairs. Anybody can install the equipment. It's all the stuff afterward that happens to make sure it always works well. So we actually interviewed the three low bidders. We had lengthy conversation with all of them, and Hub Technology clearly was... You know, their whole presentation was about Hagerstown, about what they can do for us. They were clearly clear about the technicians they have and how close proximity they have, and they're also a... They sell what they make. Everybody else sells something else, somebody else makes. The company we currently use in the low bidder was Precision. We currently use them for maintenance, and their maintenance and their help with us is marginal at best. They're technicians, they've lost a lot of technicians, and we know all that. So that's why we're not going with the low bidder in this case, we're going with the second low bidder. The other major change on this is that right now, when you leave the decks, especially the university deck, you pay at the gate. That'll change. The industry standard is you go to what they call a pay-on foot machine. You actually walk over to another machine, and that's where you do all your transactions, where you cash your credit card. And you take your ticket, and when you go to the front gate, you stick the ticket in, and everything's paid, and you're good to go. So that's going to be a little bit changed. So at the university deck, we'll have a pay-on foot machine there, we'll replace the one over at the A&amp;E deck. We'll also have a cashiering system inside the offices, so that you can also pay at the office if you need to. So we have a number of ways to make that happen. But that's going to be a major change, and we'll work with other staff to do a kind of a PR campaign, make sure we get the word out to everybody, and make that change. The final thing I wanted to bring your attention was on the funding source. In fiscal year eighteen, the funding source was most of bond financing. We thought the project would be over four hundred thousand dollars. It actually came in much better than that, obviously, at two hundred and eighty. But because of the bond financing issues that were currently... You know, we're not sure when the next bond will be issued. The funding source will actually be out of the parking fund. So we do have the funding available. Most of this won't be paid out until probably, probably close to the end of the year, I would say. And so the funding source has changed from bond finance to everything. There'll be a lot of the parking fund. So those are major things about it. It's... And I know with parking, things can be a little questionable sometimes, just to make sure you guys are aware of what's going on before we issue the contract.
So we'll have a cashier at the deck at all... At the decks at all times?
Not all the time, but mostly during the day and in the evenings. For the most part, we're going to push everybody to the machine, obviously, that's because that's going to be available twenty-four seven. Typically, we have staff there till late evenings, especially on the weekends, till two o'clock in the morning typically. And if they have to help somebody, they will be there. We still have staff available, yes.
The pay stations accept cash, coins, and credit cards, and they also have an intercom button. We will have a cashiering station in the office at the university deck. I have that staffed until a little after five each workday, and the A&amp;E deck is staffed until midnight weekdays and until three in the morning on weekends, and we'll have a cashiering station there as well. But everything you can do at a cashier, you can also do at the machine.
All right.
Also, when there's events, I have extra staff at the university deck, so if there's something going on at the Maryland Theater, we'll have a cashier at both.
Will the gates also take cash or credit cards, or we have to pay on the...
No, the gates will not take cash. We're removing that option so, you know, if you're trying to get out somebody in front of you and they're full with cash, that'll be gone.
I've asked credit cards.
It will take a credit card, but we're definitely going to push everybody...
No, I understand. I mean, you just got them back from Dulles Airport yesterday, you know?
Yep.
We all go through these, and you try to remember to take that ticket with you, because it's a lot quicker and easier if you still have it.
Exactly.
But people forget.
If you put a card on the beginning, you can just use your card at the end. It'll be a similar system.
We will be changing all of our signage, and the first several months, we plan on having people out there, as you pull into the garage, reminding you, please take your ticket. And we're not going to do both garages simultaneously. We're going to do the A&amp;E garage first, get all the bugs worked out. Then we're going to move to the university deck, and then we'll do that one, and we'll have parking ambassadors there as people come in, and we'll change our signage. And there will be attendance there throughout the day, because people will forget.
And being that it looks like a process to push everyone to this pay-on foot machines, do you envision going forward to not... The need not be necessary for the cashier? Are you anticipating to continue to have the cashier long-term? Or is this like six months a year?
The cashier will be there forever. It's just a secondary option in case there's someone that was in the machine.
Yeah, I mean, there's always a...
Bottom line is you...
The gates don't come up.
Right.
When we say cashier, it's cashier slash parking attendant.
Bottom line is, you're not adding staff or changing anything.
Correct.
No.
And this won't be taking staff away either.
Right.
It's just an additional duty.
Does this solve the issue with the binner cycles?
No one... The issue Councilmember Keller brought up is with motorcycles entering parking decks. Motorcycles do not have enough metal in them to activate the loops to safely raise the gates. No one will allow motorcycles in a garage. The state of Maryland passed a law that says you must allow motorcycles. So the procedure we use now, when a motorcycle pulls up, the attendant goes out, we lock the gate up, the motorcycle enters, we lower the gate, and then when they leave, we do their...
Wow.
That is how...
Nobody makes the technology to do that.
My concern is that they are threatening legal action over it, and they have made it very clear that they want the signs that say no motorcycles allowed down.
They will.
Yep.
You're right, I should have mentioned that. Right now, we have our signs with our rates and everything on. I have not changed them yet, because I knew, no matter who we went with, we were going with the pay station option, and all of our signage is going to change. So I didn't scrape those off and change it, knowing we're just going to change all the signs anyway. But that will come off as soon as we...
Okay, I just didn't want to have to spend that amount of money and then come back and have to redo it.
No, and all of our regular customers, sorry, know to pull up to the gate and stop, and an attendant comes out.
But outside the times that the attendant is there, the motorcycle's going to be...
They just pull around.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we don't have that many motorcycles actually use the deck. And we are meeting the law by having somebody actually open the gate. It doesn't say how you have to do that, but by having staff there, the majority of the time, we can actually accommodate them. But there's no manufacturer that'll... They won't accept the liability. But there's also no stipulation with this state law that says there has to be an attendant a certain amount of time to accommodate. It just says, what it says, if you accept state funding, you have to allow motorcycles on the deck. How you get them in and how you get them out.
No private facilities.
Yeah, every private facility just says, forget it, we're not doing it.
Okay, let me just ask you this, I'm still confused. As a customer, what's going to be the difference between what we do now and when we go in there?
Sure. When... In the future, when you come in the deck, you pull a ticket, and then before you return to your vehicle, you go to the pay station, and you'll pay, and you'll get your ticket validated.
Okay.
And then when you drive out, all you have to do is put that ticket in the machine, the gate will raise, and you drive out. There'll be no more waiting at the deck while the person in front of you is putting nickels or dimes in or anything like that, so...
Which you can do right now at A&amp;E deck. We have a pay-on foot there at the fore. But that'll now become a requirement.
Now, and you mentioned, I just want to make sure that I did hear it, didn't want... Maryland Theater nights, we're going to have that staffed so people pay cash, or are you expecting five hundred people to queue up?
No, we... I understand what you're saying. The way we do it now is I'll send an attendant up, and he'll be there, and he'll just collect two bucks from people and swipe people out. It will actually go more smoothly, a little more smoothly, whatever. This new system has what's called a roving cashier card. Right now, that attendant is just using his monthly pass that he uses.
Right.
So now, he'll actually be able to take the money, swipe this roving cashier card, and it will log in the system, two dollars. See, right now, whichever attendant's on duty's collecting that money, then he has to go in, count it, log it in, and all that, and there's really no balancing on that. With the new type of card, he'll still be doing it. The customer won't notice anything different.
He'll be taking cash.
But he'll be taking cash, and it will be logging two bucks, two bucks, two bucks.
It helps us on the backside. Account for the money and account for...
No, no, no.
But yes, I will still have...
Right.
I will still have an attendant there on Maryland Theater nights, community concert, any event at the Maryland Theater.
Bike night, things like that, we always have staff there.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Okay, well, how does it work for someone who has a daily pass?
Sure. The equipment is actually going... The whole setup is going to look a lot cleaner, and I have some pictures. Right now, you have the ticket dispenser, then you have the pedestal with your daily pass. This is all one thin pedestal, it's all built in. So if you don't push the button for the ticket, you just reach over and hold your pass, and it will open. It won't change at all.
It's a same.
And we may not even have to reissue passes. I'm still checking on that, if the new equipment will work. If we do, we do, it's no big deal. We went through it before when we... When we did it, I just swap them out one for one. But we may even be able to have people retain their current cards.
So when you come in, do you have to use your pass to get a ticket?
No, you just come in, you... It'll be... You won't notice any difference at all.
Okay.
If you have a monthly pass. You'll swipe it in, you'll swipe it out.
Okay. The difference on the tickets will be is that right now, if you notice the ticket has a strip on it, that's a magnetic strip. These will not have a magnetic strip. There'll be a scan. Magnetic strips can be damaged if you crinkle them or bend them, and then...
Or you put them in a wallet that has a magnet.
Magnet it, yes. And this won't affect... This will be... This will be a barcode, just like you see on almost everything else. So if it's... It gets crumpled or bent or whatever, it'll still read it. So hopefully, that'll help eliminate those issues of unreadable tickets, so. We don't have a lot of those, but it does happen, so.
And this... And this equipment has a guarantee?
We have a two... We have a two-year warranty, and then what we did during the bid was, we asked for warranties for the next three or four years after that. And that was also part of our decision. We had some companies that said the warranty would be up thirty thousand dollars a year, and others were a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Like, for that amount, we just hire somebody, we don't need you to do the warranty work. So all those factors came. It was a very complicated bid, but that was part of the factor.
Now, these are obviously for our city garages. I know there was some discussion at one point about some other lots in the area.
And I wanted to mention that briefly. I know we have guests here, and I don't know if tonight's the night to get it resolved, but Mayor, I don't know, were you one... Were you mayor at the time when we had the predatory tow people? We had a number of years ago, some predatory towing practices around here, and we had a horrible situation with people coming in from out of town at night, parking for Maryland Theater. We all know there's some spots by district court that say private parking only, you know? So these people, nine o'clock at night, they have all these meters and everything, parking there, not realizing there was a problem. Within fifteen minutes of parking there, they were getting towed away. That all you could say was sign, I mean, but then it came down to, and to get your car out of hock that night, after you got out of the theater, two hundred dollars cash only. We had a whole bunch of people from out of town get towed, try to get their cars out of hock, couldn't even get their cars, because who has two hundred dollars of cash with them? And we passed some ordinances to say that couldn't happen anymore. Coming out of district court and watching people put ten-dollar bills in a place that says cash only, and getting a sign that says no change in the machine, take your receipt, and not producing a receipt, and not having any identification who owns the parking lot or how to get your money, is unacceptable. And I think we need to have an ordinance here. And I would ask staff to put their thinking capsule in. To me, it came very simple, that you should not be allowed in Hagerstown to have a gated parking lot that is cash only, that does not have an attendant. If they want to take cash only and have a gate there, they need to have an attendant there. And I think that's simple. We never had this situation. I don't know of any other place around that takes cash only for anything. But it's... And then there's people... We had a similar situation with the gate wouldn't open. When the bank owned it, you push the button, the bank answered, and if there's a problem, they could raise the gate. You know, you go to the bank now, and they say, we don't own the parking lot. And I know, hopefully, that problem is going to be solved shortly, but I think, given that we've had this problem, that we need to do something, so we don't have in the future. And I, you know, I think if we can come up with some appropriate ordinance, it would be good.
Maybe get with, maybe Rodney or you, and you can get with Jason, and maybe there's some out there someplace else, we can fashion one after that makes sense.
Well, he knows some.
Again, this equipment there at the bank lot will be replaced at the beginning of August, but I don't know.
It's supposed to be replaced soon. I think right now, the gates are actually up.
The gates are up.
Are they up now?
Yeah.
Since last week, they just put the gates up, so I think parking there is free right now until...
Good, maybe they figured out. Because, you know, it is very... Yeah, it's very frustrating.
Yeah.
And I'm not that familiar with what they're buying, but they may be buying equipment that accepts credit cards.
Oh, I'm sure they will. No, nobody, nobody. I mean, we're getting to the point in the world where people don't accept cash, not to take... They don't accept credit cards.
Do you think they're getting replaced by, or early August?
Bob said...
Beginning of August.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Should we just wait and see what they're replacing with?
Well, I think we need to... I think what Lou wants to do is...
Well, I'm not concerned about them, I'm concerned about...
Anybody else in the future.
Right, right. So there's not an immediate hurry, but once we see a problem like this, we should be proactive for future, I understand.
Would you like to see some standard for what rate posting should look like, or, you know?
Rate? No.
Not rate, but rate should be clearly posted at entrance or something.
Well, I believe...
Not what we would define rates to be.
No, no.
So people know cash only or credit card.
I think that's appropriate, that you should know before you pull into a parking garage how much it's going to cost. I think most garages do it, but I think... See, you're coming up with ideas that I hadn't even thought about that makes sense, that I think everybody... I can't remember a garage I pulled into that doesn't have the rates posted. All... I'm not sure whether this one does or not, but that's the other thing. This one's, you know, three hours an hour with no maximum, which is really fascinating.
What happens?
It's twenty-four dollars.
They...
Oh, they now put a maximum up? Okay.
So somebody comes out of town to go to court, they're not familiar with Hagerstown, and they come to the courthouse, and the first thing they see is that parking lot. I think, momma's go pull one here.
Right.
And so they're not familiar with all the other parking options they have.
I do take a lot of calls for that lot.
Yeah, that's ugly. We shouldn't be taking calls for...
Yeah, let's...
Not all complaints, I don't want to...
Yeah.
People don't know who owns it, and they just...
Right.
I do take a lot of calls.
Well, let's wait... I mean, let's... Again, there's not an extreme rush to do this, but let's see what kind of equipment they put in to begin with and what they do, and then we can focus on an ordinance that makes sense that has.
Well, I would suggest, Mayor, one, again, I reiterate, there's no emergency here. In the same respect, if we have some ideas like this, maybe we should get in touch with them, so that we say, you know, this is what our thought processes are, so we don't have these folks who are good people, do all the stuff, and then us tell them, oh, you need to do this and that, and then it's going to be government again. So let's try to get that upfront.
If you say be proactive upfront about it.
Yeah. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, proposal for Thomas Kennedy Park.
Good afternoon. For several years, we've been working with the Massey property as to what ultimately we'd like to see that property become. As we all know, we removed two of the blighted buildings there a year or two ago, and the building that remains there is the showroom, and we are actively trying to see a reuse of that building. So assuming that a reuse of that building would occur, and that they would need as much parking as possible, we put together this concept plan of the parcel that's in we put together this concept plan of the parcel that's in your packet. And on, um, the left-hand side here, as you're looking at, is the Massey showroom. The green area would be kind of maxing out the parking, relocating the drive-out into the library, um, parking lot. We would shift it to the east as far as possible, and that leaves the blue area that's left over that can be used for something else. And that's what we're here to talk to you about tonight, is that piece of blue, in, outlined in blue, is a proposed park. Uh, with me tonight is Rabbi Post and a group of, a fine team that he's assembled to, uh, make a proposal to us about a proposed Thomas Kennedy Memorial Park in the area right across from the synagogue, so I'll turn it over to you all.
Well, thank you for welcoming us for this opportunity. I'm the Rabbi of Benet Abraham, which is our synagogue here in town, the one and only Jewish community in Hagerstown. We're proud to say that we've been around for over a hundred and twenty years. Um, and our members of our congregation have been welcomed and participants, both, um, in civic service, and one is assembled here at the, at the table. Lou is a, um, a former president of the congregation, um, as was his father, and his brother is one of our board members. Um, and, and there's a legacy of devotion throughout our community in civic life, and business life, and artistic life throughout, and we're, we, uh, we feel strongly about the city, and, um, we're proud, we're about, we're proud to be, um, welcomed in that regard. Um, it's a, I, as myself being new to, uh, Hagerstown still, I've, I've been here about four years, it doesn't feel like four years, and I'm the incoming president of the Hagerstown Area Religious Council, which is made up of thirty-five faith communities, and it's just a remarkable community to serve as a rabbi, where, uh, it's not unusual for me to be introduced as the rabbi of the area, and, um, I think all of this would not be possible without the interreligious pluralistic, um, cooperative climate that exists in our community, and long precedes certainly my presence as the rabbi of the synagogue, and I'm indebted to really all of you and the entire religious community that they've been able to establish that atmosphere in Hagerstown. I'm joined here, uh, today, who I'm sitting by my side is Toby Mendez, who likely needs no introduction. He's, uh, he's, um, a legendary figure in terms of the gifts of God that he's been able to render, not only in Maryland, and, uh, certainly in our area, but, uh, has done some pretty extraordinary work, um, beyond. Um, Tom Rifeord, um, all of you know well, um, we asked Tom to be here because, um, Tom is incredibly passionate about Thomas Kennedy as a figure. Uh, he's a man of, uh, bo- both Toms are people of high integrity, and, um, we, we want this to be a project that is cooperative, that's not only between, uh, and among the Jewish community and the, the city, but to bring in as many community participants as possible, and, um, Tom has a particular ability to reach out and, um, to be, uh, to invite other people and hear other people so that they can be welcome in this process. Monda Segalkin, um, is the president of our congregation. She has done a wonderful job, uh, in the last year, and has been a partner to me in envisioning. Our synagogue has grown under her leadership, and, um, she has spent many, many years, um, working on behalf of projects, um, as a social worker throughout the entire area, uh, so, um, we're really, I think, uh, proud to be, to have arrived at this moment. Let, let's turn to the first, uh, slide, there we go. Um, when I came to Hagerstown, I saw a vibrant community, but East Baltimore Street had some challenges. Um, and those two buildings sort of exemplified some of those challenges. Um, they were blighted buildings, um, kids are walking through that park, um, regularly to go to school. Um, it's a thoroughfare, uh, and there are all sorts of interesting things that I had noticed as myself coming to work every day, seeing what was going on in those buildings, so. I'm deeply grateful and appreciative of the cooperation that took place between the county, I, my understanding is the county owned the buildings, uh, transferred to the city, and none of the, and they're, um, being removed, and what has occurred in that space has added so much to East Baltimore Street. Um, we, we see people taking, um, advantage of the park and, or whatever that green space is right now in all sorts of ways, and it's just a much more inviting, um, place and destination for congregants as they come to worship, to see a nice, beautiful, um, space across the street, rather than, um, what had, what had been meeting them previously. So thank you very, very much for all the effort towards that, it has been incredibly helpful. Um, so we're here to talk a little bit about Thomas Kennedy. Um, uh, he, Thomas Kennedy, I have to say, uh, I'm a lifelong Marylander, um, and long before I ever really was that invested in the Jewish community of Hagerstown, I knew well of Thomas Kennedy. Thomas Kennedy was taught in my synagogue religious, uh, school back in, uh, back in Montgomery County. Um, he was in a session that is devoted to American Jewish history at the flagship seminary in Cincinnati, um, of a course that's inti- titled literally American Jewish History, where there's limited time to talk about American Jewish history and all of its incredible achievements, um, and some challenges. Uh, in the course, there was a whole fifteen to twenty minutes devoted entirely to Thomas Kennedy and his achievements. Um, he's written about in, uh, in history books, um, people of note and worthiness within the Jewish community are very familiar with him. And here in Hagerstown, um, there has been assembly of, of Jews from all throughout Maryland who have come to make a pilgrimage regularly invoking Thomas Kennedy, and he is, uh, it's not unusual for a rabbi as they're addressing um, the Maryland State Legislature, or to other, um, people beyond Hagerstown, to, to say how proud they are to be, um, a recipient of the devoted efforts of Thomas Kennedy. He's just, he's a, he's a well-known figure, um, not only among our community here in Hagerstown, but well, well beyond. Uh, he was a, uh, you, all the work that he did, he did both as a proud American and as a devout Christian. Um, in addition to being a Christian, he was a poet, um, and an editor of the Hagerstown Mail. Just contributed magnificently to the area in so many ways. His crowning achievement, um, which really, I, I noticed that the, the, here on, on the ceiling here, i- i- we have character counts. And so many of the, um, the values that are represented here are, speak to what his, um, his ethos was all about. I- it went, just very quickly, um, when the, even after the Bill of Rights, and even after the Constitution, Jews were, there was actually religious discrimination embedded in the state constitution, in other states as well, where Jews could not serve in public office, and they couldn't hold, uh, public positions in service unless they pledged loyalty to, um, Jesus Christ as Savior. And so this prohibited, um, Jewish participation, and participation from other religious minority groups in civic life, and so Thomas Kennedy, as a Presbyterian, as a Christian, felt that this was wrong. Um, and he dedicated, in a courageous effort, having been challenged many, many times over, to the passage of what was called the Jew Bill, which, upon its passing, six years after its introduction, um, allowed Jews to serve in the Maryland State Legislature immediately thereafter. Um, so we're conceiving of having a, uh, a park done in his name across the street, a public park. And we hope that the park will serve, um, as a, 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 as a, as a mechanism to elevate certain, uh, goals, uh, in the area. Of course, it's to, um, promote Thomas Kennedy as a figure, but we also think it'll serve in that capacity to attract visitors, um, and others throughout Maryland and beyond. Uh, Thomas Kennedy is already embedded in the educational system throughout Maryland. Um, my wife, who's a teacher, um, eh, her curriculum includes Thomas Kennedy, um, as an, as a elementary school teacher. So, we know it's there and something that we can capitalize upon, and this site could be a focal point to harness. Um, it's just an incredible gathering opportunity for people to come around and to work together privately and publicly, um, across their various domains, there's, um, a nice opportunity to do that, and to have a space to, to concentrate that around. Um, of course, there's, um, you know, we're, we're, we're so thrilled to see all that's the good work that you all have put into the downtown landscape. We see ourselves as a partner in that, a supportive partner, and we want to be a part of it more. Um, and we know it's already building upon a lot of work that's already been achieved downtown. I'm very blessed that, um, Toby has agreed to help us in this project, and, um, to help move this vision forward.
Hi, uh, I'm Toby Mendez, and I'm from Washington County, I've lived here since I was about ten years old, and, uh, a product of Boonsborough High School, and, and, uh, decided to come back here more than thirty years ago to set up my studio and kick off my career. I'm known, uh, mostly in the state of Maryland for a couple of projects, the Thurgood Marshall Memorial, it stands in front of the US State, I'm sorry, the State House. And also, if you go to BWI Airport, there's a portrait bust of Thurgood Marshall there as well. Uh, sports fans will know me through Camden Yards, I did all of the Hall of Fame sculptures of, um, Cal Ripken, and Brooks Robinson, Frank Robinson, Earl Weaver, Eddie Murray, and Jim Palmer, uh, they're there. Anyway, I, I was very flattered that, uh, Monda contacted me and put me in touch with Rabbi Post, uh, about this project, because it's very much related to many projects that I've done. Really, uh, freedoms that are related to our Bill of Rights and the fulfillment of that, and Thomas Kennedy exemplifies that highly. And, um, what I'm encouraged by is, is that in my conversations with the rabbi, and also through the rabbi with the city, is, is that, um, the hope is, is that collaboratively, collaboratively, that, uh, that, uh, Mr. Tissue and I will work together to design a memorial that's fitting to the space, but is also created with materials that'll stand the test of time, um, stone, masonry, uh, and bronze, so that, uh, this, this story could be shared for generations to come. It's a rare opportunity, when you do a work of art with a memorial setting like this, that you know that it's guaranteed with a little bit of care that it's going to last for centuries, and, uh, it's quite a statement. And I think it's incredible that Thomas Kennedy was from our county. And, uh, anyway, this is a conceptual rendering that I did, uh, for, for the rabbi, so that we could start a dialogue. The next step that I see is, is actually meeting in person, uh, with, with Mr. Tissue, and start talking about how this memorial could come, come to be. But what we are looking for today is, is to set up, um, basically a collaborative effort with the city. And, uh, anyway, uh, part of that is, is the beginning of design, um, and what I'm proposing is, is I go ahead and do a scale maquette of the sculpture, and, um, uh, Benet Abraham has secured a five thousand dollar donation, and we're asking for, uh, matching funds from the city so that we could start this design process, uh.
Hi, thank, I want to also thank you all for, for having us, and for all the work that you've done, um, on the, oh, that would help. Thank you. Okay, thanks. Um, and for all the work you've already done for that space across the street from us. As Toby said, um, what we're requesting today to move this project forward is five thousand dollars. We also need, uh, it's very important that we get from you a letter or resolution of support of this project that we can take to Senator Seraphini. We've already met with Senator Seraphini, he is very excited about this project, as are other state leaders. And I've started talking to private donors who are also very excited about this project. But we need to know that the city supports us and will help us move this all forward. Thanks.
Aaron gave me the microphone, so, uh, time to buckle up. You know, there is, uh, there's not very many people that are from Washington County that are, that have more historical importance than Thomas Kennedy. In two thousand and four, I was at the Miller House, visiting the gang there at the Washington County Historical Society. And there's a group of people from Baltimore, and they were there visiting to find out information about Thomas Kennedy, and they were making a pilgrimage to his grave. The organization they were from, I believe, was called the Brish Shalom, Brith Shalom, uh, organization, it was a Jewish organization. That's not working anymore. And, uh- Thank you.
That was done on purpose, Tom.
Good, then, my time is up. The, uh, thing about Thomas Kennedy is, um, he's known as the father of anti-Jewish discrimination. And people from all over the world come to visit his grave. And when you think about, uh, the state of Maryland is the second largest number of, uh, elected Jewish people. And it's all because of Thomas Kennedy. Um, here around this table right now is a gentleman who used to have the same seat in the House of Delegates as Thomas Kennedy. And, uh, also the same seat in the Senate, because he served both sides. He was a, he was a poet, he was a publisher, uh, he started and became editor of the Hagerstown Mail, which became the Herald Mail later on. He was, yes, a politician, he was also postmaster of Hagerstown for a couple of years. He was, uh, a renowned early abolitionist. He was very much against slavery, and he was a patriot. He wrote a book, uh, that was published in eighteen fourteen, poems about, um, the Great War against Britain, you know, the War of eighteen twelve. Um, he was first elected in eighteen seventeen, there's no truth to the rumor that Don Munson actually served with him. Um, but, uh, in eighteen eighteen, he submitted the first Jew Bill. And he never gave up, he was called a Judas Iscariot of his race, a traitor to Christianity. He just thought it was wrong. He had never met a Jew in his entire life. At the time, there were only a hundred and fifty Jews in the state of Maryland. But he felt the Jews ought to be allowed to vote, to be able to hold public office, those kinds of things. He didn't understand why Maryland, the free state, wasn't truly free. And, uh, he kept introducing that bill, you know, he was defeated. It, it became his defining thing, he was defeated in eighteen twenty-three. He ran again, was elected, eighteen twenty-five, re-elected. In eighteen twenty-six, the climate had kind of changed enough, he reintroduced the legislation, and it became the law of the land. On his obelisk at Rose Hill, I don't know if you've ever seen it, it says, "One who loved his fellow man", and there's nothing more powerful than that. And I look forward to this project, because I believe that not only is it, you know, high time that there's some sort of memorial to Thomas Kennedy, but it gives us an opportunity to even attract more people, and to, uh, and to do more things, you know, have, have a, have a center of inclusion and understanding and celebrating diversity, and being able to understand about getting along. And the idea of the character counts that the rabbi had talked about, that defines Thomas Kennedy. So I'm very pleased to be part of the project, and I'd hope that the mayor and the council, and by the way, some of the council members have already said that they would be happy to financially support this, this, this effort out of their own pocket, so I, I thank those that said that, not putting you on the spot publicly, but thank you those that had said that, um, to me privately. So thank you for, for letting us bring this to you, we have a great, great man that has agreed to do this project as a scholar, world-renowned type of thing, and, you know, we have an opportunity for greatness. On the one-hundredth anniversary of his first introducing the Jew Bill, so that he was introduced in eighteen eighteen, so in nineteen eighteen, they put a marker on his grave, but that was the only memorial that's ever been done to Thomas Kennedy. It'd be nice if we can step up and do something like this to celebrate what's truly important about being American. Thank you.
Question, are there questions for our guests?
You didn't really serve with Thomas Kennedy.
Let's do it. I, I just was, I can personally attest to the pilgrimages that have been discussed, that I've had the opportunity to, address folks at the Thomas Kennedy grave site that have come up from Baltimore, um, and I wish I could be as articulate as the folks who have spoken. Uh, but one thing I would say that you haven't heard, you've heard all the things about Thomas Kennedy and what he is and was, but this project, I happen to know, is the tip of the iceberg, you've heard inclusion, diversity. This is a, a sculpture and a memorial to something that is, that is happening right now in our community. I, I note the NAACP now meets at our synagogue, and our effort is to do a lot more to continue that type of process. I'd say that's a fair statement.
In, in, in Hebrew, uh, the word for synagogue is, uh, there are many words for synagogue actually in Hebrew, but the most common is bate kineset, which is the house of gathering, and so that's what, that's what we all do when we come to our places of worship. We come from different stations in life, different experiences, different generations, and we come together to be vulnerable, to hear one another, and to support one another, and ultimately, a, a, a city such as Hagerstown that has that thread that, of a seed that was planted by Thomas Kennedy, those virtues should not be just expressed through our sanctuary doors, and they aren't. They're expressed in gatherings that happen, um, in our public spaces and all aspects of our lives, and to do something that could help to magnify or support that um, is, uh, I think, uh, is part of who we are, um, in many ways, as, um, people from Hagerstown.
I, I just want to thank you for everything you do for our community, and specifically for this project. I think, uh, since I took office, people reach out all the time about the art around here and different projects, and they say, we have so much history in Hagerstown, we need to dive into it, and I think this is very important, but also reaches that, the history that we should be celebrating, so thank you guys. It's a great project.
So, so what are you looking for, from us?
We are, uh, we are looking for a letter of support, um, that Senator Seraphini says would help him with his efforts at the state level, that the city has committed to this, and five thousand dollars to get the project started.
And that five thousand dollars could come out of one of our, we have a public art CIP that has more than that in it, we could use five thousand from there.
I figured there's probably some savings in the pod sculpture-
I figure there's probably some savings in the pod sculpture movement, right, that we raised private donations for.
We have a purification grant also for downtown. We have a purification grant also for downtown, also like $10,000 or $20,000 or something else in there.
Rodney already located the $5,000, I'm sure of that.
I'm in.
I am.
Let me just make this comment. This is an idea, this man, Thomas Kennedy, was truly a great hero in the annals of mankind. And this is an idea whose time came a long time ago. And I personally thank you for bringing it in front of this mayor and council at this time to make it happen. I know a lot about Thomas Kennedy. My senior high school, my high school government teacher in senior year considered Thomas Kennedy a hero. And our class, my class in government, heard about Thomas Kennedy at least once a week during, all during high school, my senior year. And we did some things in Annapolis when I was there with Thomas Kennedy. And this is a really good thing for the community of Hagerstown, Maryland. And this is going to help us be on the map nationwide and worldwide. So this is great. And Toby, I'm glad to see that you're involved. You and I had a chance to work together a lot years ago in Annapolis. And I am delighted to see that you're a part of this. Thanks.
It's good to see you, Mr. President. Do you want to tell us a little bit about your fundraising plans for the sculpture?
Looking to me.
Well, we have, so the initial phase, we needed $10,000. We have the $5,000 raised, we're asking the city for the match. And then the other parts of the project, there's some things the city, we know, can do, because they've done it with other parks, the foundation parts of things. And we'll work with Mr. Tishu about that, and what he can do. And then the state people are very excited about this project and will help us raise at least a third of the other funds. And then we have private donations that I've already contacted that will come forward once we know that there's commitment at this level also.
What is the projected cost, Minister?
A projection? The responsible answer is, is we need to design it. You know, the space is not that large, so it's not going to be exorbitant. And the hope is, is that, you know, I have some conceptual ideas of how the memorial might be designed and developed. And I think what I'd like to do is to meet with Mr. Tishu, sit down, show him what I'm thinking about, and see, you know, what the city can do, or what they're capable of doing. And then we start figuring out how much Benay Abraham is going to raise. If we're going for matching from the state, you know, they'll match in-kind services as well as real dollars. So it's really trying to figure out what the balance of that is. But first, we have to responsibly design it and make sure it's right.
Question?
I'm obviously in favor, but in looking at the design, just a couple of thoughts. And I've said this before, as soon as those dilapidated structures were removed, you got to see the best part of the property, which was that huge tree across the street. But that said, you know, and I don't know who came up with this layout, but just my two cents, I don't want us, and you accentuate that the property is fairly small, I don't want this effort to be hinged around the design of the possibility of the necessity of parking for some adjacent property that's been sitting empty for years and may ultimately end up coming down rather than being reused. And I just, it's just my two cents. And so, you know, as you do move forward with that effort, I guess, for me, I thought that it would be moved a little closer to, and I see your logic in wanting to relocate, but it seems to me that we're doing so so we can create a separate parking lot, you know what I mean, away from the library, and then we're going to sort of push this idea of a park over, you know, into the far corner of the property that's remaining. And all I'm saying is, I don't want the idea of this park and its design to be centered on the necessity for some parking that we don't have the funding for and may never do. I'd rather we look at the space we have, and all of the space we have right now there, and do something that's inviting as possible, and not, you know, pigeonholed into space we think we're not going to need. And that's just my two cents, because at the end of the day, you know, we may or may not know what, you know, what's going to come of this building.
That's true. That's good direction for us, and I appreciate that. We can definitely work with that. We were just trying to show that we could hopefully have our cake and eat it too.
Right.
But if the building doesn't come about, I think we could work something, make the park have a little more size to it.
Yeah, I was just basically looking at the empty field there in front of the tree, keeping in mind where the parking may go. And really, also looking at kind of the topography of that property. It's relatively flat, for the most part, in front of that tree, and then it drops off to the properties there. So what I was looking at is kind of, you know, bookends of empty space that could be landscaped out beautifully, and then putting a plaza that has the right width and depth, respecting the tree behind it, but also the drip edge of that tree, so that whatever we put there won't be stained by, you know, any tannins coming from the leaves, the roots, structures from the tree, those sorts of things.
And for me, you know, because I walk by this place a lot, but for me, I guess I had envisioned that in angular nature, because a lot of folks pull into the library there, you know what I mean? And so you sort of have that angular view toward the tree, and it pushes that developed space of the park away from it, and away from that root structure, to where the existing entrance and exit of the library is now. But just, again-
But I'll work certainly with Mr. Tishu and figure out what makes the best sense. You know, some of the considerations, there was a building there, we have to look at soil conditions, make sure that whatever we design is engineered so that it stands the test of time. And, you know, that's my skill set. You know, with Thurgood Marshall, I led the team that designed the full plaza. And so that's the skills that I have to bring here.
Thank you for that generosity of our approach. I mean, it's, we obviously want to be supportive to the economic development of the downtown area. We need there to be strong vitality economically. But it is also true that is that the area where we are going to be particularly seeking revenue, knowing that that space could generate visitors that then could spend their resources elsewhere in the city? You know, people who are more experienced with public planning have probably a better perspective on that than the rabbi.
I think it's very exciting, and I have Mr. Menzel for it, it just makes it, instead of a great idea, a truly class act. It would be something, if we do it right, it'd be wonderful. And I do have to say, if there's any criticism we've gotten of our public art, it's that people say we want local artists, and we want it to represent our history. And this fits perfectly into that mode, and thank you all for everything.
I'll put together a document for you all to pass here in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Rodney.
Nothing additional this evening?
Doc, let's talk with you. Please, no comment. Lou?
Thank you. Two things. One, I'm curious. I've noticed what appears to be a complete lack of anything happening next door to where I work, being the Hamilton Hotel. Have they stopped their renovation, or is it just-
They will tell you that they're waiting on Maryland Historic Trust to give them the okay on the windows.
Is that what it is? Wow.
I missed, say that again.
Maryland Historic Trust has to give them the okay on the windows.
Does it make them do those same decisions with Hager Five to help expedite that? I mean, I know they're their own entity or whatnot, and they probably move at their own speed, but that seems to be the same issue that Hager Five is having with the closing of the sale on their property, waiting on their Maryland Historic Trust. I don't know. If we can send something with a letter of encouragement, or I haven't-
I'm all for whatever we can do.
I'll reach out.
The other, the other two things, I just briefly mentioned MMLs that I know Emily and I and Valerie were at. I regret not having attended it as much as I could have over the terms that I've been here, because the last, the last two that I have attended, I found to be very useful. And I would commend everybody. And one hand, it's like you have the feeling you're taking advantage of things, so you're using city money to go down to the beach. On the other hand, I have found that it has been very useful. I look at things like our body cameras and our police officers, and I wonder whether we would have had them that week that we needed them, had we not had that input. So I just want to commend everybody to try getting there. And the last thing, it's the second week in a row I've had to do this one. Very shockingly, not only a good friend, but a former deputy and a current bailiff in the circuit court, Rick Good, passed away last week. I don't know if anybody here knew Rick. I guess you did, Bob. And Rick Good was a different cut. He was, he was a hell of a police officer and a detective when he worked, and he was a great bailiff. And Rick Good was somebody who would probably, if you meet people who are friends with him, they would tell you, they're best friends, Rick Good. Rick reached out to everybody, and it was a sudden loss, nobody expected it. And I just want to give my condolences to the family and recognize a real class act that we have lost. Thank you.
The only thing I have, kind of piggybacking a little bit off the presentation with the park and pod and the cultural trail and how we're moving forward as an art destination, things of that nature, had a young lady reach out to me this week who came down on the cultural trail, had a great experience, brought her children with her, her small dog, was very encouraged by the openness and the dog receptacles and things of that nature. And they followed the trail all the way to City Park. When they got to City Park, though, there's no dogs allowed in City Park. So just maybe a thought process we need to look at, whether it's some sort of leash law we can act that, if we're going to try to have people and encourage them to use the trail with their families and their dogs, that nature, and they get to the park, they were in a situation there, then, they went in anyways, thinking it would be okay, and they were, you know, encouraged to leave, and the children got upset and things of that nature. But I guess the whole point is, if we want to be probably consistent there, if we're going to have encouraged dogs and families and things like that to use the trail into the park, and then when pod comes, there needs to be a thought process there of going forward of, can we, you know, have a leash law of some sort, of something like that, that the dogs would be welcomed? I'm sure there were probably no dogs allowed for some reason in the past that happened.
When did that pass, Kristen? I think you-
Well, we allow dogs on the exterior of the park. And I think, Paul, I couldn't agree with you more, and you've mentioned a word, and I think the reason we don't allow, among other reasons, but the number one reason in my opinion is because, notwithstanding my effort to get it done, we have never been able in this council to pass a leash law. And so you can understand, if there's not a leash law, you don't want dogs running free in City Park.
Yeah, this is just maybe something we can look into.
And so I would certainly agree with you, and if we couldn't pass a leash law for the city, we could pass one for our parks. And say you couldn't have a dog unless it was on a leash in the park.
Especially with the trail, it's all set up with the dog receptacles the whole way down, and then you get to the end, and it's like, what do you do now?
Completely agree.
That's all we can look into.
We're going to put some dog time, because time, like the horses back.
We'll get an attendant. That's it. If we could look into that, that'd be really appreciated.
Kristen?
The first is, it looks like the Cedar Lawn Community's reached out. They're going to have a meeting on July 27th. I don't know who else plans to attend. I'm trying to make it out to that meeting, albeit I don't have any expectation of speaking to anyone on the matter, as much as just listening.
Just put that together. I don't see that.
It just came in our email.
Yeah. Cedar Lawn Community.
Oh, okay. I'm just, I'll go.
And then the other item, you probably saw my comments about the ESAC, you know, Emergency Services Advisory Committee. You know, there's a consultant doing a report that's a follow-up to what appears to be sort of a preliminary report. I asked at the last meeting, you know, when the committee is going to get the report, and the article doesn't indicate that we're going to get it, and I didn't get an indication at that last meeting, that the committee is sort of being formulated for this purpose is going to get it, you know, prior to, you know, the bodies and the recommendations and things of that nature occurring. So I'm not really sure what my role is, you know, almost sort of a liaison between this body and that committee's activities as it relates to our participation in the county on fire and EMS. But it's hard to have a role if, you know, if that role isn't to review and comment on that-
But no one in the committee's gotten it, though, right?
Oh, yeah, people have it.
Oh, they do?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, people have a copy of the draft, or the draft of the draft. And I don't-
Who's the county county reporter? Do you?
Commissioner Kiefer.
Does he have?
I don't know, he wasn't at the last meeting, so I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
But I'll keep going, until I feel like it's no longer useful to go.
You're always useful. Anything else?
No.
No one?
I'm done.
I only have a few things. Don't forget about the retreat next week, 10 to 2:30. Bring your ideas, and your concerns, and your solutions. And I attended the Rim and Cutting Grand Opening of Christopher's at 204 East Franklin Street. It's a new restaurant, serving African cuisine. They fed us while we were there, it was delicious. So, yeah. But anyway, it's, I think it'll do well. And they've told us this morning that business has been good, so let's hope it stays that way. There have been, I just want to put this out there in case anybody in the community's listening, there have been three break-ins this season so far at the Hagerstown Suns. The last coming just Sunday evening, early Monday morning, they actually took the bars off the windows in the clubhouse, broke in through the windows, and stole some computers and some stuff like that. I know that we're having some special checks, and I'm talking to HPD about, we put cameras up there a couple of years ago, because we had a problem, and that problem went away. And, but it seems like we're having another problem, so maybe we'll have to put a couple more cameras, just to help us to identify who may be doing these. But they seem to know what they were looking for. So hopefully, we can, I know that we're checking, or that they're checking the pawn shops and everything to see if they can come up with their equipment that was taken. But I'm sure that HPD's on top of it, and they will get to the bottom of it, so. I also will probably come to that meeting on the 27th, so. I've got that even, I didn't open it up yet, but I saw I got it. But anyway. So having said that, this week's YAG Fair, if you get a chance, go. I know it's a great time and-
Good night tomorrow night?
Good night tomorrow night. But you know what? It's eight bucks to ride all night.
I saw that.
I mean, that's cheap enough as it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, you can do that.
There you go.
All right. And I, you know, I agree with Lou. I always encourage new council members in particular to go to MML, and those who have served for quite a while in the council will go back to get a refresher. So I'm glad Lou went last year and this year, so.
I think we should note as well, Thursday night, the YAG Fair is the auction night. For folks that aren't aware, they auction off all kinds of livestock. These are livestock that kids in the, in, yeah, in 4H have raised. And these livestock go a long way to support their funding for college. And you can buy everything from, you know, rabbits to cows while you're there, and all kinds of different baked goods, so.
Do they have great food?
Thursday night, it's, yeah, Thursday night, it's a good time. Thursday night, it's, yeah, Thursday night, it's, it's a, it's a good time. And over the years, you know, you see a different levels of crowds, but the auctions, if nothing else, it's a cool thing to watch.
I had some delicious crab cakes last year that went by there. Very good. I didn't expect them to be that good. All right. For that, that's it. Thank you all very much. Jill, do you have a minute?